All right.
And join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Harvard Committee meeting Thursday, May 4th. We have in attendance Hillary Thayer, Herb Samble, John Parker, Amy Fell. I can't call him consecriary, but you know, Fred Teal, Man with Awards, a production by Doris Alvarez, and we have Nelson Pope and Voorhees here. Brand. Okay, so the minutes. Has everybody reviewed the minutes?
I'm sorry.
Nobody has. We're gonna try to look at them or put it off?
Yeah, I don't.
Let's put it off so we can get to this quickly. So we're going to put off the minutes for us. Of course, we're gonna put off the minute.
Make a motion table.
Yeah, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion table.
I'll second.
Okay, so moved, so we will postpone the minutes until another time.
I don't have the.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought I did.
Okay.
Sorry, are there extra copies of the minutes? Yes.
Item number two, we can open to the public for comments and questions. Of course, we have people online. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that has a question or comment? They all look pretty sound about that. How about anybody? Fred, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Next item correspondence requiring action. So Cold Gage Basin LLC, 236 Redwood Road. An extension request of the wetlands permit that expired June 4th, 2022. There is no change to the project description at this time. The applicant requested one year extension required to complete the sanitary upgrade.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, yes, here before the board to request that extension of the sanitary permit to replace the existing sanitary that is there today.
And you are?
Danny Kewell from Bee Lang Associates.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. What's going on there?
Nothing.
So I sent you a letter there now before the Department of Health to get that approval. It took them a little bit of time to do that, which is why we're requesting the extension. We do have a valid DEC permit for that sanitary replacement. So once we have the requested extension for the Harvard Committee permit, we'll be able to obtain the sanitary one from the Department of Health.
So just out of curiosity, you submitted to the Suffolk County Health Department for the IA system?
Yes, correct. And I sent you a copy of the April 5th correspondence that they've sent to the applicant, who is John Condon. He's the sanitary engineer, requesting a copy of the DEC permit, which I was able to provide him, and then requesting a copy of a valid Harvard Committee permit, which, you know, unfortunately had expired by the time he had asked me for it. So those are the two items that are lacking right now for the sanitary system replacement.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to, I guess, grant the one? Well, let's hear from Nelson Pope. Do we have any observations, comments?
In our opinion, this is a application that the board is generally wanting to move forward with its replacement of a municipal system of I O W T S. To that point, however, we have not reviewed since 2020. But assuming that the health department is going to establish a plan and certify it from a sanitary perspective, I believe that this project does warrant.
May I ask, what has prompted the applicant to initiate this process? I mean, there's no, as far as I know, there's not a building permit application or there's not a renovation plan or you're going to move from the water side of the house to the street side. I was by there today. It doesn't look like there's been any activity over there at all. But is there anything that you might share with us to give us some context here?
I'm not honestly sure why it's taken so long for the sanitary system go in. Maybe it was COVID related. I'm not really certain. So there is nothing going on at the site right now as far as development. But when we did apply for the permit a couple of years ago, it was because I believe the sanitary engineer had determined that it was a failing system.
It was a failing system. Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Also move.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion has been forwarded, so we will, Nelson Pope, Voorhees write up something to.
We usually just grant, just usually do a motion and grant the, you know, this, I think, Danny, you requested one year, right?
Yes, one year, I think should be sufficient.
One year from today.
So we just do, we do, we don't need a, we just do the motion.
Okay, so you made the motion, right?
Yeah, be one year from today, you're saying, because the previous permit expired and.
We usually do it.
Right, it was, it was. Yes.
I'll make the motion.
So just to clarify, did we do that? I believe the permit expired in April of 2022?
Yes, June.
June.
Was it June?
That's what it says here.
Yeah, because it was, it was issued.
It's already expired. This is one of those expiry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was, so the permit was issued in 2020 and then.
Expired on June 4th of 2022. According to what I have here anyway.
So you're saying we need to extend it for two years, basically, or from a certain date to a certain date?
They're asking for one year.
If it expires in June of 2023, then yes, one year is appropriate.
But, but you're saying it expired in June of 2022. So one year extension would.
I might have that incorrectly.
And I'm just going by what's on the agenda here. It says, it says, it says June 2022. So that.
So I, I see here the permit expired June of 2022. So it's, so if you're going to grant a one year extension, that would only give it till June of 2020.
Well, that's what.
It should be one year from today.
Oh, I thought you said.
That was my question for clarified that.
Right.
From today, one year from today.
Okay.
I will continue to make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so moved, so we will grant the extension with the proviso that it starts today, May 4th, 2023. And you certainly have a year's time that's more than adequate to do this.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a great night.
All right, you too. The second item is 37 Glover, requesting an extension for an additional two years for wetlands permit that was approved May 6, 2021, which permit shall expire two years from the date of issuance. Is there somebody for 37 Glover?
Yes, good afternoon. This is Katerina Greenco.
Good afternoon. Of course, can you find her?
I apologize. I'm in the car. I got stuck in traffic going back.
You see that?
So I pulled over.
Well, that's good.
That's.
Yes.
That is a good thing.
So what's, what's the request based on?
This property is for sale and the property owner is really hoping that the buyer will pursue the building permit. So she's just hesitant to file for the building permit at this time and would like the new owner to do so. And as such, she requested for extension, I'm sorry.
That's interesting.
Nothing is being changed. The project remains the same.
So there's no construction that's going on at this point?
Not, not at all.
Yeah. Did I understand correctly, there's a new owner right now?
No, it's still the same owner. The property is being listed for sale.
They just blanket cleared the lot.
Right. Fred?
Yes.
Any thoughts on this?
Well, just as far as the date goes, this permit hasn't expired yet. It would expire in two days. So if you were to grant this for two years, it would run two years from May 6th to May 6th, 2025. I would defer to brand as far as any issues or any unreadiness as far as the merits of granting it.
So firstly, the consent agent just acknowledged that there doesn't seem to be an immediate intention to execute the project. That's just an aside, but looking at the actual permit, it appears that the project met all the structural setback requirements. It did, it does have the substantial 50-foot wetland buffer associated with it. It looks like it's an IA O W T S system that was approved as part of the project. So those three things in and of itself seem to meet the Harvard Committee standards.
There were no other variances, I recall, too, from.
It does not appear so. And just so long as there's an acknowledgement that the conditions stay in place, you know, because there are, you know, known diamondback terrapin habitat. There, you know, the going of all your bad, you know, issues have to be addressed. But, you know, so long as those conditions are upheld, this seems like a fairly standard section in terms of the merits that you have of the previous permit.
But the permit also involves specific plans for a house.
Correct.
Right? I mean, I've seen the images on the sign posted. Does this also imply that that's the project that is being approved as per this permit?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But the Harvard Committee approved is referenced in the permit itself. Just want to be sure, there's a list of approved plans, including, it appears, a survey, dock plans, landscape plans, planting plans, wetland buffer planting plans, a treatment removal plan, drainage, drainage plans. So there's extensive planning that went into this. So there is the assumption that the person purchasing the property, executing the plans, has proved. And if they were to make modifications to those, they would have to come back to the Harvard.
Okay, because it's not unusual for somebody to want to make modifications on something this expansive.
Yeah.
Is that, can I ask a question? Is that something where we might put in a little footnote? When you begin your building plan, come to us first and make sure the plans are as previously stated so that it.
Well, that's the inspector's job.
That's the golden part.
Yeah. But the, the permit automatically transfers to the new owner, essentially?
Yeah, the permit runs with the land. So, you know, does it change the ownership? It has no effect on.
Yeah, there's a lot of properties for sale with a pending permit. So it's, okay. The, I mean, the problem, though, is, is what, what I've seen happen in the past is where a new owner comes in and not having gone through the whole process, either is, is not aware of all of the restrictions or doesn't want to be aware of them. I mean, it's, it's where we've had, it's, it's a situation where we have had problems in the past where construction has occurred, which, which didn't comply with the permit.
This is my concern.
And I think that's what her concern is, is.
It is, but that's.
That's enforcement. Yeah. That's enforcement.
Well, once the, it goes for, it has to, the building inspector looks at what was approved here and has to conform to that.
It's also a $15 million property and anybody who buys this thing, their lawyers are going to be all over it and they're going to see this stuff, so.
Is it, is there a provision in the code that after the foundation is poured, that it has to be surveyed? Because I know in some communities, that's the case.
Not that I'm aware of.
That's something that we should have a discussion.
Almost like framing inspection.
Yeah, because.
You know, I, I can't speak to the building inspector, you know, at what periods that he goes out and does.
Yeah, I mean.
He may, he may actually do an inspection at that point.
Well, whether he.
But, but they don't come back to us.
But you know, what Lily and John are asking is a very legitimate question because somebody could come in and fudge a couple of feet and the inspector could look at it and say, that looks like 3,000 foot footprint, that's fine. If we have a survey, those guys are licensed and are separate from the village and there's stamp and there are insurances on that. That's a good thing.
We do not have that.
Well, that's something, okay, let's all be aware of that in the future. Same with, with heights, you know, with, with the pyramid law and the 34, 32, 28. Those all things should be quantified by a third party. Do I hear a motion to accept the extension on this to provide an extension?
For two years.
For two years, starting?
May 6th.
May 6th. Yeah.
I'll second.
Second. The motion has been accepted, so again, this is just something, we don't have to have. Brand, put together anything, Fred?
No, would you see the, yeah, the motion, that, that will be in the file and.
Okay.
We'll be all.
So that motion has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can drive now.
Thank you, I will.
Certainly. The next item, Mark Harris at 12 Green Street, extension request for an additional two years of wetlands permit. Is there somebody for 12 Green Street here?
Nobody online?
Not this hour. Is there anyone representing 12 Green Street? I'm there.
Go once.
Well, I was, I was by the project today and this is a very complicated project. Remember, it involves historical preservation and adding to a building and all that stuff. They're, they're, they're very busy over there at the site. It's not as if they're, they're.
I can't believe it's been two years.
Yeah, it's amazing. You know what? Look at, go online and Google that address and you'll see the old house. And what you see today is a very different cookie, but, so what's the procedure here?
It is similar situation. They're requesting a two-year extension and.
Is this a situation where foundations are on the ground?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's, oh, yeah.
I haven't been by there lately, so, you know, pretty much.
I'd be so inclined.
Okay.
Same thing as the last one, May 6th.
Okay, so do I hear a motion?
Second.
I move.
Second move. All right, so moved, so this has been approved for a two-year extension starting today and hopefully, yeah, that project has been going on for quite some time.
Well, they got, they were a little late getting started, I think, if I recall. But nevertheless, it's, it's complex.
Decisions. Is there somebody here from, or Aiken Soundview?
Yes. I'm on the Zoom.
Greetings.
Good evening. I'm Dan Hall from Land Use and Environmental Services. I'm the agent for the owner and I'll be representing them for the meeting this evening.
You have the mic.
Okay, so we resubmitted plans for the last meeting we had. They addressed some items such as removing the seaward end of the stairs has been denoted to be removed on a survey and the buffer plans. We also labeled the steps, they're going to be flow-through material, permeable. And the existing walkway is labeled to be removed and replaced with the natural material or mulch. And then the latest revision, which we made this week, was we updated the buffer plan, just a correction to match the survey plan on some of the setbacks. Nothing changed. It's just a typographical error that had been carried over from a previous plan. And I believe that was it, that had to be addressed unless I'm mistaken.
Brand, you remember there were some notes to be made?
Yes.
And you've seen those?
Yes, Dan has been communicating through to our office with updated plans. We have gone back and forth on some things, but everything has now been settled. Plans are consistent. They did address the Harvard Committee comments regarding the mulch pad, staircase, and all of the other minor issues that we had to resolve. We believe the plans are in order and we draft the permit. We'll get a quick overview and answer any questions.
Would you just review or summarize for us just the principal setback issues that we have on this particular project?
Okay, so I will. I'll give you a quick overview.
Just quick, yeah.
Yeah, so the project involves the installation of a sun equal 14 by 40 within 850 square foot patio that those improvements are located 60 feet from the crest of the bluff. So no issue.
And from the wetlands? Set up here over 75, right?
Yes, the wetlands lines the mean high water at the site, where well, maybe 100 feet or plus from that.
Second, I'm going to pull up the survey to make sure I can answer your questions.
123 feet from the wetlands and 50 feet from the bluff.
Well, 60.
60.
Yeah, the wetlands are substantially land lered, but sorry, see where the, the crest of the bluff, so the crest of the bluff driving back the street. So, you know, with the pool and with the pool, the patio comes installation and dry wells to capture stormwater runoff. There's also the installation of a fence around the pool for proper pool barrier, pool barrier enclosures. Reletation of the wetland buffers, variable width buffer. And I believe that's it, right, Dan?
And the fences outside of the buffer area.
That's, we worked on with Land Use during this review process to make sure all fencing was supposed to be removed from the buffer and the new fencing is sold outside, landward, of the variable width buffer. But I believe that is the crust of the application that I had before me. Dan, if I missed anything?
Now, just the one item was that we're going to, the owner agreed to upgrade the sanitary system to a new IA system, but that's on the landward side of the house.
And that, really outside of setback requirements. So with that being said, we find that the project meets the chapter 25 requirements for a 50-foot wetland buffer. They did provide the calculations to demonstrate the buffer equivalent. This is the variable width buffer. It does meet the statutory requirements, the standards outlined in due to by dash nine. This is a pipe two secret action. These activities are not on the side harbor waterfront consistency type two list and therefore were subject to close contingency review, which was completed. It sounds to be consistent. The conditions of the approval are, in addition to the standard conditions that we would normally require. There is the removal of the two feet of stair treads at the base of the bluff. There is the removal and replacement of the stair treads and platform landing with, I'm sorry, it's open break decking material. The removal of a wooden walkway within the required non-service, non-fertilization buffer area.
Sorry, could you backtrack about the platform? Is that the one outside the cottage that you're speaking of?
I believe so.
It's pre-existing?
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, the establishment of a 6,805 square foot variable width reform non-service non-fertilization buffer, which is the equivalent, an area to the contiguous solid 50-foot button buffer that's required by chapter 285. The acknowledgement of northern longer bass within 1.5 miles of the site, which would restrict the removal of trees or in compliance with New York State DEC standards. The acknowledgement of the presence of diamondback terrapins, which would limit the work, the services to set time periods on the site. No passing within the required buffer areas. Containment of construction debris outside of either wetland or land buffer areas and really on site. And the establishment of a covenant, covenanted wetland buffer through the recording of covenants and restrictions in the county post office, which will need to be reviewed by the village attorney's office. So with that being said, plans that are being approved are the survey prepared by Michael Minto, who was last revised April 13, 2023. So many cool details drafted by Patrick Fools. And the landscape plans prepared by the Block Jones Land State Architect, last revised on April 28, 2023. That being said, we need the permission for the Harvard Committee to.
Brad, when you say that a covenant has to be reviewed and approved by the village attorney?
That's me in this case. I do that, Mr. Teal.
And so explain that process.
Sure, we have a form covenant that's recommended that for the, to cover the buffers with all of the restrictions that we outline here. And the, the applicant will submit a draft for my review and I will review it to make sure that it complies with both the permit and our standard form. Not very often, every, every once in a while, there might be a request for a modification here or there. Doesn't really happen very often. I usually say no because we have a form and we stick to it. And I will review it and I will tell Doris if it's acceptable and she will inform the applicant. I will tell Doris that, to inform the applicant that it's, it's okay as to form. But they will have to execute that covenant and file it with the county clerk's office and provide us with a copy of the filed covenant with the filing information from the county clerk's office. And it's only then, after it's been filed with the clerk and we've gotten a copy, that the building inspector can issue a CO for the property.
So there is a form that the applicant fills out?
There's a form that we provide to the applicant, but we always advise them that they may want to consult their own attorney with regard to this. It is a restriction on the property that runs with the land.
That's right. So they sell it, it's still on the.
Right, so exactly, so, you know, you bring a restriction on your property, but you agree to it as part of the, part of the permit conditions and that's how, that's how the process works.
Thank you.
So included in the permit that you would be approving is exactly what Fred was mentioning. The instructions for the completion of those covenants and restrictions, as well as a template that they can follow, to me very easy, but as Fred will, to his best consultant.
Yeah. Yeah.
One one question, uh there were, there was mention of diamondback terrapins. I'm not aware of there being any on the on that bay area.
There are, my son found one uh. Uh two weeks ago, a baby.
Okay, in in the bay there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um interviews do not acknowledge that there are or are not the presence of diamondback terrapins, simply that they are noted to um. There be a potential for the presence.
They, three weeks ago, there were some, how many different species of bats do we have? In this area, because you said long-eared bat?
So the northern long-eared bat is the one that's most um of concern right now. They're actually, they've just elevated the classification of them to endangered. And the D E C and U S P life are frantically working on uh updates to their guidelines in terms of how best to protect.
How how many species do we have here?
Cause I. I I do not know the answer to that.
Okay.
There's many.
There are many.
And the northern long-eared bat is.
Yeah.
One of the most um common bats.
I get that.
The white nose syndrome.
White nose thing, yeah.
It impacted them the most. It impacts a wide variety of bats, but northern long-eared bat for for many speculative reasons has become most susceptible to its uh.
Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion?
Almost.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um so proceeding with uh.
The uh.
Oh.
Pass it down, sign off on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one asked for an adjournment, right, Chris?
Pumpkin?
That is correct.
I hope, so that brings up a question. The last time pumpkin, oh, so we're moving on to the next item, right? Uh. We had a discussion the other day about uh when this applicant keeps rolling over, is there a? I mean, in there.
This will be the third adjournment, so a couple of things I'd say about this one um. The uh I I know from talking to Chick that he's working on an extensive memo. With regard to what's bef- what's before us now, uh which I suspect from talking to him, you know, you'll probably get in the next. Week or so. Um and we want to get that into the record on this regardless. Um but we also want to give the applicant a chance to respond to it. Um so it would be, you know, because of that, I I I think we should, you know, probably grant the adjournment. Give the applicant, get let Chick get his memo out to the board, to the applicant, to respond. For for possible consideration of, you know, of what's in the memo at the next meeting. And after that, you know, if there's, if there's a, you know, continued. In a in action on the application, I I think it's fair, certainly if before adjournments, it would be fair. With that adjournment to basically say if you're, you know, if you're not going to pursue this application. We're gonna deny, we could deny it with without prejudice because we won't be on the merits, but for lack of of. Prosecuting the application basically, but I I I think we should get Chick's memo first. Give the applicant a chance to respond to it and let's hope that they uh they do.
The applicant wrote and said that they were um. Coming up with another strategy or a response to our comments.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Right, no, well, that was, that was in the request for adjournment for this meeting.
Okay.
So um have they been in discussion, can they be in discussion with uh Chick?
Um. You know, was I, I think if they had a chick issues, his memo, and they have a question or something on the memo, memo, of course.
I mean, can they just call him up and talk about the project?
It it's it's in the hearing process, so I I think that. You know, he he certainly can talk to applicants, but. You know, you don't want to have be having too many on the merits of the application ex parte con- conversations outside of the hearing where the public is. So I would say that, you know, when, you know, if an applicant uh. You know, has a question on the memo or whatever, you know, from an informational perspective, yes, but I, you know, certainly not to, you know. Getting into the real substance of the application itself and its merits and all those kinds of.
Why is Chick doing, I mean, great that he is, but why is he doing this now as opposed to um?
I didn't ask him that, I just see just, you know, he wanted my, uh you know, he was working on the venue, uh on the on the memo. Menu, must be close to dinner, Freud.
Doris, could you order in, please?
Yeah, but I, so I I I, listen, it's a complicated application, I think he's been, you know, reviewing it for a while.
Sure enough.
But but I, anyway, I, you know, I if you, you know, my recommendation would be to to grant the adjournment with, but you know. This is probably the last adjournment, you know, they should be ready, they'll have this memo, they should be ready to discuss this application again if they're not. I mean, I think it's, it would be fair for us to to deny it without prejudice, get it off the agenda.
Is is it your understanding that that Chick will be releasing this memo not only to us but to them before the next meeting?
Typically do that, that's not unusual.
No, but I mean, is the is the timing before the next meeting, so that the so the applicant would be able to respond?
From talking to him, I think it is intent, uh Brad, if I'm misspeaking, or if you know something I don't know. I think it, yeah, it was, it was just, you know, it wasn't, it was gonna just be too late for this meeting. So I I would expect that you'll see it in plenty of time to be able to review it, the applicant to be able to review.
So essentially, we have two reasons for 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 uh for adjourning it, one, that we have a memo that we haven't seen yet.
Right.
Coming out of this, and two, that needs to be.
And I think regardless of what happens with this application, as you know, it is a difficult application. Uh we we certainly want to have all of that in the record.
Fair enough, uh so do I hear a motion to adjourn this applicant?
Make the motion. Second, anyone?
Okay, so moves, all those in favor?
Second.
I did.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, so it has been uh. Tabled until our next meeting, which is June first?
June first.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh the next item in the continued public hearing. Is the application for Sag over Sag Harbor Cove, Sag Cove at nine Bluff Point.
Okay, uh good evening, members of the harbor committee. Alfred, you still in here? Christopher Warrior, landscape architect from Water Mill, New York. David, my wife Jane Wardy. My son, John Hamilton, Jane and I are the owners of the property. And uh we built home for ourselves, um we have some graphics to hand out because lots of materials here were worth the choosing.
There's always a certain handle.
Click notes, if I wanted to. Let me grab a tripod.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this something new or or since, was this just already submitted, was this already submitted to us?
Yes, a second meeting here, I I presented a month ago. So come back and revisions, you know.
I just, I'm just, I'm looking at a letter received April, April twenty-eight. And it's just the same material that would have been submitted then.
Yes, yes.
It isn't something new since April twenty-eight, this is what we would have been submitted, so I already have it in my file.
No, I don't think so.
So I know Mr. Parker mentioned Sambo, I think you were on Zoom last time, is that a little confusing?
No, not at all, but I, one quick question, it's already come up, and we're looking at the, and excuse me for interrupting your presentation, but uh. The chairman and I were just looking at this, when you talk about the proposed residence area. And seven hundred. Thousand seven hundred and one thousand seven hundred, is that the total?
No.
That's just the first one.
That's the roof cover, yeah, the whole, the building's two-story, it's farcical, the total. Houses to that.
Okay.
I'm trying to get it on the screen, anybody else? See very quickly too. So what I did is um I've updated our presentation, I've made some changes since the last time. So I'm gonna start out with this neighborhood, yeah, they added some info to it from last time. And what you can see, this is Bluff Point, right, although. Most of the lots here are all undersized, are all under twenty thousand square feet, none of them can meet. Weapons, right, this can, so um I'm also showing uh square footage of coverage comparisons. I'm basically gonna be same size as the house next door to me, and I have twice the size lot. Um there's some smaller homes, it's only eleven hundred, and some bigger ones, you know, twenty-four hundred square foot footprint, so I'm not proposing. Anything out of character of the neighborhood, the small house, and it's luckily a large lot. It's placed off center because I'm saving all existing trees, that's why it sits in that manner. I all conform to zone. And um last time I was here, I I made a presentation and um. Made my case that I do meet the requirements of two eighty-five, ninety, one through four particular, and I see many of those requirements. Um clearly, I have a fifty-foot wetland buffer. That seat that, and uh square footage, saving all the trees and providing wetland mitigation. There's no swimming pool, and a thousand square feet under allowable coverage, and um. Everything I'm doing here is a net positive to the environment, the U I A system. The current state of the property is a disaster, it's mowed lawn right down to the water, the sanitary system's practically in the block. It's just, it can't stay that way, and if you look, many of the homes, it's all mowed lawn right to the water, it's the worst thing for Sag Harbor. All that runoff going right in there, so we're removing most of our lawn. And um so I think I do meet that and um clearly, it's an undersized lot as all the homes are. And Mr. Sharp mentioned that earlier tonight, that there are so many undersized lots, that's why this code is here. For you to give relief to the setbacks, which we, so. At the last meeting. Um I got your comments, first comment, and I'll address right away, is that you asked me to go to Z P A. To try and get five feet of front yard setback re-renewed. So I looked into it, um first thing you have to do is apply for billing. Apply for billing permit, building starts to reject it, then be able, apply for billing for me a lot of times. Okay, I have a set of plans, but I'm not good enough for billing. So I came and spoke to Chris Powell, and I said, you know, Chris, I'm gonna do a lot of work here, what do you think? And he went through the whole application. And he says, you don't have a chance of getting a variance for this, you're just dumb, you're having hardship, well, and setback's not a hardship. And you have a good application, so. Do whatever else they ask of you, and I I think you're good, so what I want to address is, I think, the other recommendations, which were good ones, I mean, Hillary. Um Pam, and you recommended I move sand there. So I looked into it and uh David Rhodes was able to move it, and uh now I'm. If you look on the second sheet, I mean, you can see how we shifted the sanitary. I need a covenant from the health department, put it on the driveway, and they did a good amount, but it's now almost completely. Outside of the hundred-foot, well, it's ninety-nine point nine percent, so that worked, that was a good shift, it was a good idea, thank you. And uh I'm glad I could accommodate that, so that was a good positive thing. Um the next comment I'd like to address is um. Eddie. Here on Zoom, but their main comment, I mean, many, was make the house small. So now Jane and I, um we just built a house ourselves, it's a small house, it's an ancient place house. Has no bedrooms right now on the ground level, so we've added about seven hundred square feet. In overall footage, um we talked to our architect Steve Patfield, we can online. And he shaved off about two feet, the entire length of the house, what that did, gave us two more additional feet of setback from the wetlands. It also reduced our overall coverage and increased our vegetation and reduced our roof cover. So it's like a grand slam, just by doing that to keep all those things that it uh reduces, so we we made that reduction. Now the house is about three thousand square feet and um. So we made that change, you know, we're we're doing the best we can here in state, but um we can still live with that, doesn't change the design entirely. Uh and Mr. um Sharp made a recommendation. And that was, he wanted us to remove the terrace, that's the concrete terrace that's out um towards the water. Um the terrace has been there maybe a hundred years, and uh we sit there almost every night. So I would like to make a compromise there. I would remove the concrete terrace and the stone walkway, but I'd like to replace it with a permeable pavement. Okay, so now it's a much softer approach to that.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Wouldn't it do more harm removing the terrace? Cause it's been in place. To rip it all up. And put permeable paving there and just leave the terror, I don't.
I'm gonna be careful, I mean, I'm.
I mean, it's, why not, yeah.
So.
So 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 where's?
I don't see any harm in leaving the terrace.
Yes.
This this piece here, this is the walkway that's been there a hundred years, and um this terrace has been there too, it's. It's poured concrete, so I could offer that, or I could. Probably drill a bunch of holes in it too, and then people, but uh, you know.
I'm not saying that, but I don't.
Well, I've I've often wondered whether that would just work or not in a lot of instances, whether whether, you know, it's 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 whether you can make the concrete. I suppose it depends on what's underneath it, but 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 simply drilling holes, you know, could, I suppose they might fill up, I don't know, uh how how long it would remain.
Questionable is its sustainability, but I'm just sort of leaning off of that compromise because I just don't want to give up, we don't have any place to sit, it's all vegetation.
Well, I said, I, when I was there the one time, um I was just amazed at many things, but I thought. Frankly, the ugliest part was that concrete, and I I don't think sitting there is a bad idea whatsoever.
Right.
Um but I I was surprised that you were hanging on to the concrete, okay?
The spot.
No, no, that's, 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 that's the, we get it, we get it.
So that was my offer of compromise there and um. But you know, Mr. um Sharp came to property, I met him, I was in the house, I came out, walked around, and um. He really got a feel for it, he was there and uh. He did turn to me and say, you know, I don't want you to run and make this house. He said, I'm not against you developing this property, I just, you need to do an environmental breath. He doesn't want me to run and get that house in place, but we could, we could do it one window at a time, and we wouldn't have to do anything. Must, or just a zero back to the village. And not we are doing that, but I don't, we don't want to do that, we're gonna move the house back, we're gonna expand it seven hundred feet. We're peaking at all along, there's so many things, I'm not bothered here, I can't imagine anyone being opposed to.
Would you just highlight that one, that that point you just made in terms of where the existing footprint of the of the house is relative to the wetlands? And where are the new footprints?
Right, so this red hash mark.
Yeah, how many feet is that?
Since some of the existing houses, the new houses.
That five, seven feet?
It's five plus two now, wasn't the original when you moved it back five feet or was it eight feet?
Yeah, it's every bit of eight feet from here, I could look at my survey. Yeah, I have those numbers.
Yeah.
Right now, with the the reduction um of that that two feet off the half, for about an average, you can do the averaging fifty-eight feet from the last.
But we're just talking about you from your original foot.
Retreat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the closest approach to the wetlands and what is it with the old house? I mean, you're you're moving further back, so what's the closest point to the wetlands of the old house and of the new house?
Well, this is, this line is the fifty-foot line, the closest point to the new, to the wetlands is probably existing, the closest point, forty-six.
All right.
That's the first page on that, that I get.
So busy.
It's micro.
I'm getting old.
The closest point on the system residence, forty-six. The new residence, the closest point is to be about fifty-two and change.
Okay, so about six feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then all the other points are further back, that's the closest one, this plan is like the most.
Yes.
Yeah, so anyway, the retreat, we're now at an average of fifty-eight feet. If we do the averaging, you see these big setbacks, I'm sixty feet away, because of the shape of the wetland line. So we retreated, this red band is where we retreated, pulling it back. But the whole proposed house, everything conforms to zone, I don't need any variances.
If you had to meet the seventy-five foot setback, you would be, you would have virtually no building envelope at all, right?
It's zero, is it zero? Well, it's this little river right here.
It would be about three hundred square feet, it's the theoretical compliant.
That's, that's not bad. Doesn't beat our code.
Now, you see, this is all, all the screens, right now, all lawn.
We have, you know, is there a practical alternative means a setback, I'm just trying to get on the record that there is.
The, the only one I came up with was that we were gonna keep this existing house there.
Yeah.
And then I understood, but it's so far forward.
Yeah, but it's closer to the wetlands, and this, so
And just for clarity, talking about existing conditions there, the house is about forty-six feet, but the existing sanitary system are not, an ancient sanitary system is twenty-two feet from the top bluff, and thirty-nine feet from the floodwater. So it's extremely close on the water side of the house, and ancient sanitary system.
Just accessible.
You said it's thirty-six feet to what?
Thirty-nine feet from the floodwater.
Oh, floodwaters, okay.
Twenty-two feet to the top of the bluff.
Okay, and that's all village water? Or do you have a well?
Yeah, it's village water.
Yeah. Is there a well?
No, no, we have the street, street water coming from
Was there a well?
Yeah.
Unless it's under the concrete.
Remember, the only people still has a well, village.
Yep. Pretty much, yeah.
Anyway, I think Mr. Sharp, at the last hearing, also said three times, doesn't want us to renovate my house in place. And I, and I totally get it, we gotta do it, but based on all this, I don't have a whole lot less, more to give. This is our application, and I have more information I could share. They have a very detailed planting plan, it's really a beautiful, gonna be a beautiful garden, for what I do with living. And they have a very detailed bluff analysis by Chuck Hamilton. And bluff's in beautiful shape, and everything we're doing, the mitigation of surface runoff, plus new plantings. It's all positive, there's no negative effect in the well whatsoever, in fact, it's all just getting better. I honestly think that what Jane and I are proposing here is, is really a model for Bluff Point Lane. When, once we're done, people will go by and see what LaGuardia did, and say, maybe we could do that too, or you could, if you did all this remediation. And the house fits in there beautifully amongst the trees, so I just, I can't imagine any opposition to what we're doing here. And all my neighbors are really, are very positive about it.
Let me say, I'm generally in favor of this.
Excuse me?
I'm generally in favor of, 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 of this, I mean, I think that the, the argument is, as to the significant improvement over existing conditions.
Yeah.
And, and how we were gaining environmentally, as opposed to renovating the house in, you know, in, in place. You know, it's a significant argument, and that sort of overwhelms any concern with, with, you know, not exactly meeting the setbacks, when you have a situation where this is an existing house, and, and you're, you're, you're closer to meeting the setbacks than, than the, than the current, than the current house, so I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of that concept, that way of, way of looking at it. I, I did have a minor question, though, and it's partly, just maybe because I was on Zoom at the, at the last meeting, and i- in, in terms of the bulkhead?
Yes.
It's, you're leaving the existing bulkhead that's, that's, that's there, is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
And the vegetation that's in back of that, is that remaining, and that, that I see from the, from the pictures, or?
It's, right now, it's mostly lawn, mowed lawn right to bulkhead, this is a stone bulkhead, fairly old.
Are there, are there two? Are there two bulkheads as you go down, or is it just one? There's just one?
Yeah.
It's the old stone?
Yeah, the stone, you can see it was the rendering, but the stone runs all the way just past the dock.
And then it transformed underwater.
Not that much. But it was all evaluated in, left reports, in perfectly good shape. And it's a beauty, this is really accurate rendering, this is the well end, it's beautiful, what kind of well I'm coming in there. But right now, it's just mowed grass and
Well, it's, it's not mowed, I mean, I'm just looking at the pictures. I mean, that, that's too steep an angle to have mowed grass.
On this side, it's, it's some fescue, it's not mowed, but it's just fescue, and then there's like some roses in there and
I mean, there's, there's bushes and things, and Okay.
Yeah, there's a wisteria vine growing, we're gonna re-veg it all.
Your plan is incredible.
Yeah.
Really.
Thank you.
So, well, it's gorgeous. And it'll definitely remediate any runoff, I mean, it is a model planning plan.
So the, the French drain is something we've used in North City many times, it's just a French gravel and perforated pipe to drive up. Prevents that sheet flow running off and then down. So that's, that's a good technique to prevent that surface erosion.
We, we discussed that, does it go to a dry well at either end? So it's perfed, water goes in, and, and then you slope it to the east and west, or north-south, and it goes into dry wells there?
It's really well done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so David Rhodes helped us with all that, engineered it all, so it's, it's good technique, and it disappears, vegetation just grows over.
I also like the, I do like that cement patio, I'm rooting for the cement patio.
Chris, again, to one of the points you made earlier, and this, this may be a question for Fred, as, as much as it is for you. In Sag Harbor, the waterfront lots are, the, the waterfront side of the house is considered the front yard. The street side is considered the rear yard. Does that entitle the applicant to relief from the standard thirty-foot setback? That's, that the code has for setbacks from the street?
The, yeah.
Because we're maintaining the thirty-foot setback here, which is what's helping to constrain the lot and so forth, and I wonder if, if they would be entitled to a rear yard setback on Bluff Point Lane?
I don't have to tell you the sound and code, what's the rear yard?
Say it again?
The rear yard setback is
I think it's for principal dwelling, what is it?
Thirty feet.
Oh, it's thirty feet.
Yeah.
Even for a rear yard? Okay, well, that answers the question, yeah, okay, got it.
So
For accessory?
I thought somebody had it in front of me. The other thing I just, because, you know, it didn't really get highlighted last time, but, you know, I know in this written presentation really has the colored version, I didn't use my, that's okay. But you, you go into break the, you know, one of the things we always tell applicants is you gotta meet the standards in the code, right? Especially when you don't have setbacks, but I just wanted to point out to the committee that you have a detailed narrative on all of the standards that are here, so it, it's in the record, and the board shouldn't Yeah. By the way, I, I made a mistake last meeting, which was, I suggested you go to zoning to see if there was relief. And I was advised that that was not kosher, so my apologies, we can't advise you to do that, so well, I, in, in the perfect world, I would say that might be something that zoning could look at, because the street is irregular. And in other communities I've worked with, there is a, a line that you shoot down the street, and you take an average. I don't think that works here, but I apologize for having you go down that, I think it's great you talked to the building inspector.
Well, you know, it's not hardship, other than the wetland setbacks, so that's what he said, that's a bad one.
Our hardship is our mandate is to say no, but everybody here, I think, feels very positive about this project.
Yeah.
I think.
I mean, if people say, why are you doing a swimming pool, like, this is a big tree, and I feel the tree is more valuable than a swimming pool. It's like, the tree's not little, it's just bigger and
They're stunning.
But anyway, and you know, I just think it's a model for how to develop Bluff Point Lane, if everybody got rid of their lawns, it worked, well, it would improve drastically in Sag Harbor. The worst thing is lawn, everything cut, it just loads nutrients, so hopefully others, others will follow. So I think that's, that's our presentation, happy to feel any questions, public comments?
I guess we should open this up to the public, correct? I can't see our producer anymore.
She's working away.
I have David Nelson raising his hand. Are you receiving public comments right now?
Yes.
David, will you hear us? Yeah, it's probably the last, the last meeting.
Is there anyone else?
Doris, is he the only person that's asking to speak? Ask him to raise the other hand.
Your left hand.
David.
We could take one of us.
I wonder if he's
We could take a Yeah.
Using his computer microphone sometimes.
Hello?
Hi, David.
Hi, we have computer. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you, sorry for the, the difficulties. Yes, David Nelson, I live on Bluff Point Road, official address, I have about sixty feet of frontage on Bluff Point Lane. So I had a couple of questions as to what the setback will be on the lane. And also, I wanted, it was not clear from the, the drawings that were available, how many parking spaces are currently planned. And a comment that, you know, I, I didn't really see a whole lot of, you know, a focus on, yes, we, we do need to worry about the drainage to the cove and what happens there. But the lane was never really engineered as a public road. It is not up to the standards of a public road for drainage, it's a, a gravel road currently. So that particular road is, is kind of crowned, pretty much near this residence, maybe a little bit more towards the Steinbeck residence. And then it trails downhill towards Bluff Point Road. Where there are several drains, which, you know, experience flooding pretty much at every rain. So I understand we have the, the French drain. I didn't see anything about the total water flow as to, i- if we double the footprint and, you know, impermeable surface on the lot. Is there enough drainage on the lot to prevent more drainage down the lane? And, you know, obviously that is in, you know, AutoCAD and other programs, and that would be in the, you know, dry well and the French drain discussions, but if we move that setback closer to the lane, and we double the, you know, non-natural surface on the, on the property, there will be a lot more drainage, and I just haven't seen any information directed to that.
Do you want me to address that? Yeah, sure.
You want to address that? I can address the drainage for the site, so actually on the on the survey, the R. Michael, or F. Michael Hammer survey that was submitted to the packet, in the lower half of the sheet, kind of the middle left, let's say, there are dry well volumes for a three-inch rainfall, which is the village code designed to, so it shows the roofed areas of the proposed project, the rainfall volume, and then the accommodations we're making for site dry wells to capture all that and store them properly below ground.
Does that, does that his version?
Yes, it's also a survey, the Hammer survey.
Right here.
So the French drain doesn't address any more of the people up, we're heading out with, with the rest of the site, including the roofed areas, any of the hard surface is captured by other dry wells placed around the site.
And your roof area is succulent or sedums, correct?
Yes, green roof, but all the, all the runoff is captured in dry wells. Also, David or Daniel, the driveway that's there now is asphalt that we have, and that's all being removed. And the new driveways are all previous gravel, so that'll lessen that runoff from that big asphalt area.
Are there any dry wells on the property now?
Yeah.
Zero, there's nothing. There's not any gutters on the house, that's part of the problem. The
And there are six that are proposed, is that right?
Yeah, at least. And also the revegetation that we're doing all over, comes from the storage rainfall, much better than just mowed lawn. So that's how we've addressed that, I don't see it as having any impact, additional impact in terms of runoff. Because we're capturing all the new roof, we're removing the asphalt and hard surfaces, adding the revegetation. And the house is on the legal setback, so it's in good form.
So you're moving the, the shed away from the property line and closer to Bluff Point?
Yes.
Lane?
To a conforming location.
Yeah.
It's right now, it's in a non-conforming location, that's, you know, right against the property line. So we're relocating that, and that has green roofs as well, and dry wells where it's roofed.
And it's much closer to the well now, so it's actually pulling back from the well.
So to add, to answer the question that was asked, you probably have at least three spaces for parking.
Four.
Oh, you
One in the garage.
Oh, right, okay, right.
And two to the opposite, and we, we let the neighbors use driveway all the time, it's just the way it works down there, this is a whole set. So it's just sort of a mutual understanding, we've got guests or someone.
So that's a good question, when it really, when you get several days of rain, what happens in front of your house?
We don't have any cars in front of our house, it's really outdoors, Bluff Point Lane meets Bluff Point Road, there's a couple of dry wells that fill up, and town cleans, cleans them like once a year, but it's just not big enough, but I was usually going there too. The neighbors like the gravel road, there was some question about Steinbeck's house, improving the road, full village standards, everybody was against it, because it's part of the vibe of the country road, is the gravel with the grass strip, the middle, and they don't wanna, they don't wanna ruin that.
Yeah.
That's, that would meet resistance, saying from the neighbors.
And there are gonna be very severe limitations on how much traffic is permitted to go to the Steinbeck house?
Yeah, they have a lot of limitations.
Yeah.
He has a big driveway, a big turnaround area in the front property, but private, so but yeah, it drains wells, gravelly, sandy soil. Anyway, I hope that answers your questions.
Were there any other questions?
Yeah, so is the shed a garage? And how is that in the code? Maybe that's more of a ZBA question, but is it a garage or a shed?
It's a one-car garage, it's accessory structure, it's in a conforming location, so that's it. Right. A one-car garage. Right now, the existing shed probably could fit across.
Does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Doris, are there any other questions in the Zoom view?
Yeah.
Okay, so
I have a, how, how much of Bluff Point Lane is private road, and how much of it is, is village?
It's all village.
Yep.
It's, it's The whole discussion with Steinbeck's going on, so the different roads never improved.
When he's being considered for the CPF, there was a whole issue about whether, what the, what the status of that road was, and it was determined that it's
But that's why I'm asking, it was determined that it was, that it was
It was indeed.
Okay, that's, that's
We maintain it though, that neighbors saw a pitch in and say that it's snowbound on gravel.
But it was accepted, it, it doesn't mean standards, but I mean, way back when, it was accepted into the it's, it's a village road, but you guys, you guys pay for it?
Not been accepted, I thought.
Why's that?
Was, was
No, it had, it was dozen of what?
Do they collect leaves?
We collect leaves, we pile snow, we fill the
The village does not collect leaves here either?
Then if you bring them out to the cul-de-sac out on Bluff Point Road, the village will collect there, that becomes a big pile.
Well, that's interesting.
Do you get a credit on your taxes?
But if it's a village road, they should be serving second.
I guess, we, we just take care of it.
Is there a homeowners association right there?
No.
There's not?
We have a committee that Jane's on for Steinbeck, who is very active and trying to formulate all those rules. Does that, you know, I don't mind being saved, you get more traffic going by the house, but
What do you do when people like me drive down years ago to see Mr. Steinbeck's house, and you know, I turned around in, in their house, because nobody was there? you know, I turn around in, in their house because nobody was there, but what are you going to do about that in the future?
They, they, they have a new driveway design Steinbeck House for the bus.
But it.
They've expanded it.
So there, so people are going to just drive down and drive through the property to come back because you.
Just the parking area that they designed.
Okay.
That's part of the plan.
Should we close this to public? There's no further. Doris, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
I think we can opine on this. So you have to go in the other room. Sit down with your wife.
It worked, baby.
Come on back. Come on back, seriously.
We're kidding.
All right. You want to go?
Yeah, I think, um.
Do you want to close the hearing?
Yeah, I want to close the hearing. Yeah, so, yeah. Do I hear a motion to close?
I'll second John's.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so move. So it is closed to the public and it is open to the harbor committee. I guess I just want to say this is a really nice project. And I'm conflicted in a lot of ways by the rules and regulations, but I think that, um, you've done an extraordinary job. I think there's always an issue of keeping an existing house. We would like to do that. Lily says this is her favorite house in, in, in town just about. But I think it also is, uh, one could imagine on that street, it's, it is a model house in many ways. And we have so many applicants that have houses that are just by right, as large as they could be, and that's disconcerting at times.
And unfortunately, we, we don't get to officially opine on, on architecture.
I'll squeeze it in there.
The other thing for me is that, uh, as a mitigating circumstance here, the net improvement over what's there is very substantial. As you said earlier, and, uh, and that to me is really one of the key factors in thinking about the.
We had an extension tonight, which was 12th Green Street, which presented some similar issues to this where we could meet the setbacks, but it was the setbacks were better than previous. And there was an IA system and all of that, so.
You have to look at the whole picture sometimes and.
Planting and, uh, French drain.
Permeable surface.
The scale of this is very different than a lot of the other projects, including Green Street, but.
I'm, I'm talking about the, the legal.
Where you could.
As far as setbacks, meeting the standards, uh.
Yeah.
Obviously are differences.
Yeah. Lily, thoughts? John?
Trees too are a difference.
I've already said I'm in favor of it, so.
They're irreplaceable.
So it's a, it's a, you know, net environmental, you know, positive. I think again, you have to look at the fact that there's an existing house there, an existing septic system, et cetera. And you have to look at the degree of, of improvement over what, you know, what exists or, you know, what would still exist if we, you know, it, it didn't, uh, approve this. So, um, I, I think they made a, made an effort to, uh, to maximize, you know, the improvements in terms of the environment and, uh, uh, I, I haven't seen suggestions as to, as to things that would significantly, you know, further change it that are, you know, that are, that are practical.
I just want to say one thing, if I may, and I agree with Hillary, the trees are so important and it's so nice that you haven't chopped them down and then brought in new trees. And you've left everything, so the root system will help hold everything intact further.
And then one other just small point, uh, you had said earlier that the biggest source of contamination of the upper cove is runoff from lawns and gardens. I'm not sure Dr. Gobler would agree with that. I think he would say it's the septic systems that are non-conforming now, and this one is certainly, uh, non-conforming.
Pumping into the lawn.
I know, but that, that, that's also a major source, but it's the septic systems that we have all along the upper cove and, uh, that are, uh, the major, at least as important a source of contamination as a lawn.
Do you know if your cesspool is a brick or is it a concrete?
Uh, we, we had it empty and it's, uh, it's concrete.
It is.
Yeah, it's not one of those brick, cone things. Those are really old.
Yeah.
So this may have been replaced.
Fair enough. How, how often have you had to pump it?
Just once, when it watered. And, uh, there really wasn't much, and people really never used it. Place was abandoned.
I have another point about the trees. I walked down there recently and I think that the scale of the trees on that property in relation to the scales of the trees on Steinbeck's property, which we've just saved, are important. The, the, the way it kind of fits into the whole streetscape there. So it, it does make another, an alternative difficult because it, it is really just an, an area. It becomes more of a, an area would be out of, would make the ones down there look really.
It, it looks like it wants to be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Yeah, now the trees are on the bar.
All right.
So, um, I guess, do I hear a motion to, oh, yes, please?
I know you can't see me, but I just wanted to offer one, uh, two points of clarification. First of all, uh, I applaud the applicant. This is one of those applications that I love to see every time. You can't meet setbacks, but they're doing the best they can. Um, just a note of clarification, two things. One, the plan set that was submitted by the board doesn't seem to include all the issues that were included in the original set in part regards to the revisions. So we just ask that, um, you know, a, a full set of plans be resubmitted um, just so we can fully vet them and, and note top of setbacks.
Is that the one that we're reading off tonight? That's just a stream line. The one that we gave earlier, that was the full set.
So we have a submission from the 28th of April that we'll, we'll, I'll check with Doris.
Should be the whole set.
Okay.
If not, we can get that.
All right. Um, and then, um, another note of clarification is, while I commend the project for having the, um, setback required, the 50-foot setback requirements from the top of Bluff, I just want to make sure that, um, the calculation includes, um, or the 50-foot buffer calculation would include the area that's not the concrete, you know, the concrete patio should be extracted of that.
Yeah.
So again, very minor points.
Yeah.
Yeah, just very minor points. I just wanted to make sure that the calculations are correct. That's it.
So do I hear a motion to, I guess, vote on this? Is that, are we?
Do you direct, uh, to, uh, to fight the permit for the next meeting?
That, that's why I was asking for that, the clarification of the plans, so we can write the permit that you guys.
Well, is it, has it been unanimously decided that we've approved this?
Well, we're authorizing, you know, we're.
The motion would be to authorize them to do, write up the permit.
Yeah, we're going to draft the permit for you guys to consider at the next, at the next.
I see.
We'll approve the, approve the permit at the next meeting.
Okay.
And my, my only question is, is to, I don't, not sure how, how we left the concrete pad there.
We like it.
So, uh, it's, well, it's just a question as to what, what's going, what's going to go into the permit, then the decision. That's what, that's, that's why, that's why I'm asking. That's, uh, uh, I mean, I don't know that I have a particular opinion one way or the other, but it's just, we have to have a, you know.
Well, shall we, maybe we leave it to the applicant to think about since we've just introduced this concept to him.
Or just leave it as is, because it's going to make more disturbance.
Yeah, disruption. Lily said.
I don't, I don't buy that. I don't buy that. But, um, I, I'm one of five. So I think that if you want to discuss it and when you submit, we can.
I would, I would like to know the board's consensus on that so I can write into the permit.
Do you prefer to be replaced with a permeable?
Or if you want to put permeable.
I would like, my opinion is to replace it with permeable. That's my opinion.
That would be more consistent with everything else we've done.
Mm-hmm.
On other applications.
Do we always recommend permeable papers? I thought Mary Anne doesn't like them.
Well.
Well, she's not here right now.
I'm just, I'm just remembering.
I just want everybody's opinion.
No, but we've asked other applicants when they're, uh, uh, they have existing structures in, uh, buffer areas or setback areas, to ask them to replace the materials there with permeables.
Yeah.
You're, well, I couldn't understand what you said.
I'm fine.
You're fine with, you're fine with it. Okay. Okay. Well, if you're fine with it, then, you know.
I'll do it.
Then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll put that in, that it will be replaced then. You know, without, without your finding out what, what all of us would have. Without finding out what all of, what all of us would have voted on that issue, well, if, since you're fine with it, that's.
Okay, so Grant, you know what to do with that.
So patio and the walkway?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's what the drawing labels now both are to be, uh, permeable papers. That's perfect.
Okay. Are you, are you applying for a dock permit somewhere?
We have it out.
Oh, there is a dock then?
Yeah, there is a dock there, yeah.
Okay. Good.
It's in there.
Yep.
Oh, that document, the one that's in the picture. Well, the house isn't there either, so who knows? Sorry.
So I guess, uh, do I hear a motion to have Nelson Pope Jorge's write up a permit?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
So move. So, um, we'll see you at the next, uh, June 1st meeting. And we'll have a permit ready and, um, we'll see how. Well, I, um, I can't speak for everybody, but I think right now it seems like it's unanimous. But not everybody that votes is here right now, so there will be a different population next June 1st, but, um.
Yeah, I don't think it's probable.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, John.
Good project.
Yeah. If you do get a permit, put one of those signs in plastic out in the front yard. Seriously, to let people know. I mean, you know, it's just always, um, informative for your neighbors to see what's going on.
Do it.
Yeah.
You're right. So thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you. For the record, this is Adam's on for.
Decision.
Decision.
Yes.
Gary's closed. I for decision.
Yes. Thank you. Um, I don't know that we have to discuss the coastal consistency issue.
We've said we weren't going to.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're waiting. This is on the tree clearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would wait until you have the final.
Draft of it, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to, I'm going to try to attend the trustees' meeting, um, to hear their discussion. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Doris, I, I, I couldn't hear you. Do, between you and Fred here, just, just to clarify, do we have a new draft of, of this law or, or do we not?
I haven't seen it.
It's a work in progress.
They postponed it to the next meeting. They, they did pass something.
I, I understand that.
There it is, John. This is, this is what it is. Uh, this is what it is so far. This is what Kathy, Kathy gave us. You can have this because I, I can print this. And I, I would like everybody to look at North Haven's resolve tree, um, legislation. It's interesting to compare, just so that we know. And Lily, did you talk to the people in Southampton?
No, that will be in my, in the next meeting.
Okay, great.
And I'd also like to bring, I'll look into different relates that have systems where the boat, where the guy comes around with the car.
Okay, and I, John, do you think you could write something before the next trustee's meeting?
About Tuesday?
Yeah.
Um, yes.
Could you do that and show it to us? Um, I, I think that, that the fire, it's, let's do it. And I think that the issue is, um, to suggest to them we have to quantify the number of boats that are coming and going. We have to let them know that there have been 25 inspections per year over the last four or five years. And it is our opinion that we should be quadrupling that.
Yeah, I think.
Whatever that number might be.
I, I might need to verify because the, the figures I got from, uh, the harbor master when he was here at the, at the last meeting, I wasn't quite sure that I got the correct.
You might be able to get that from somebody else. Even the mayor might know that.
We'd asked for, to be looped in, so that we didn't mention it at one point to the, the numbers that are given to the trustee, if we could maybe be copied on that.
Yeah. So I just think as, as, as going forward, what we need to say is there are a thousand boats a season or whatever it is, a week, a month, whatever. Um, there's only been 25 inspections a year. We need to update that by some, some number. And we need to look at, uh, two things. The availability of the pump-out boat as it is and is there an alter, is there a self-service pump-out solution? We don't know what it is. Let's just ask them to look into that and.
Yeah, and, and I think that, you know, I think what we're doing basically is, is, I mean, is, is the, as you, the board may be giving us back a mandate to look into it. Okay. I mean, we're asking, we're saying, well, we think this should be looked into. On the other hand, we're, we're, we're perfectly happy to do the looking into.
So we ask them, they come back, they ask us, and we'll do it.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I feel very comfortable that with that process, then we can either go to, um, the harbor master with this thing, this document, and proceed. And if we, and I think we should do it ASAP. That's, uh.
Yeah, because there's still, I mean, there's certainly time. This is the beginning of the voting season. I mean, there's, there's, there's time to put procedures in for, you know, for this, for this year.
And then we can see if that makes a difference in the water quality. If there's a big crackdown on the checking of the water.
Yep.
Let's see what happens.
Well, that, yeah, that's the other side of it. That's, we, we're, you know, Gobler's doing all of this research, this science every year. And we get information that says that Windmill Beach has problems.
And then also with the tidal flow sucking it into Sag Harbor Cove and it gets trapped in the little areas, what further effect will that have?
Should we mention also that we're considering signs? Should we raise that point here? Because this is sort of another outcome of Dr. Gobler's talk.
If we can get the signs up and dealt with for the season, that would be.
Is that appropriate to mention here? Not?
No. Talk to Aiden. And let's get it. And, and I, I'm going to look at, uh, the website.
Yeah.
I think we can all do that. Doris, who, who controls the website?
Main office downstairs.
Main office downstairs. I've.
Would that be a good thing though, to include in the letter to say we'd like to work on the signage?
Will sing.
I think it's a separate.
Yeah, but he was a separated.
Yeah, yeah, separate issue.
Going, going back to the tree clearing.
I'm, I'm confused about tree clearing, whether or not the village board is intending to pass this next week or not.
I have a memo that the coastal consistency analysis is directly invasion from Kathy Ismay. And I did circulate that to you. We did get it.
My, my concern is, is that the, the same thing might happen as to the overlay district where, where we thought that they were still, you know, considering it and, and waiting.
It's unclear to me.
To look at the planning board's recommendation and they just took whatever they had at the time, you know, and, and, you know, and, and passed it. Uh, I mean, it seems to me that, that even if they're making changes to this, there's, there's nothing to prevent them from, from coming in and saying, we've, we've changed the definition of this or we clarified that. And, 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 and voting on it. Uh, I mean, do we have something new, which is the new proposal?
Well, it's still open to the public, isn't it?
It is, but they can close it and vote on it.
But they can't close it before somebody from the public.
No, no, but I mean, they, they could hear, hear it on Tuesday and, and close the hearing and then vote on it.
So our best shot is to actually go there.
Absolutely.
Like we did last time.
Yeah, absolutely.
And what?
I don't think they would be necessarily adverse to hearing. And, you know, I, I recommend everybody do their homework. So that we look at this.
So this is what?
I won't be.
Five fourteen on, so you won't be.
To them.
I came in Tuesday night. So this morning. So this is village board consideration next week with the content of the local laws revised. Twice the full tag, including the resolution of adoption for the village board's consideration next week. So it sounds to me.
They want to make a decision.
That they want to do something with this next week. So I would say that if you want to make a recommendation on coastal consistency on this local law.
Chop, chop.
Which we've seen for about 30 seconds, um, you'd have to do it tonight.
So what, what other changes? Are they highlighted?
Well, I'm, it's in the memo and.
This is the only copy, Doris. This is the only copy, Doris. So the same thing as you mentioned before, there's like an area that we could respond if we had specific.
If you had consensus as a board, yeah, you could send a, a letter, or, as I said, it's individual, you can go to the meeting next week and be heard also.
Can we ask them to hold off until we've had a chance to review?
What are, what are, what, what, can I ask, what are, genuinely, what's everybody's thinking on this, their reason, why? Reason that it would be not? What could happen, what would be good?
We already control the clearing theoretically within the 75-foot setback. I guess it would really be between that 75 and 150 feet that where we still have jurisdiction, but don't really.
We do, we do. Just so I now understand.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a comment that we, we need to make, from the point of view of, you know, of the Harvard Committee and the wetlands law, as to whether there's anything that I don't know, is there used to be a reference to the wetlands law or any clarification in terms of, of, of how it may be consistent or inconsistent?
Yeah. Impacts our jurisdiction or the.
Language was removed, which would require the waterfront lot to apply rear yard clearing requirements to the front yard as well, such that the applicant would have to preserve 50% of mature trees. So that's it. Right?
Want to say that one more time?
Language was removed, which would require that waterfront lots apply rear yard clearing requirements to the front yard as well, such that the applicant would have to preserve 50% of mature trees.
And that language was removed?
So graphically, the quiz is, what does that look like, probably none of us can answer that.
Well, it means it would have to preserve, they could preserve less than 50%.
You know, go in and just clear cut the law.
That language is removed, for 50%.
Yeah. So I don't know, what, what, what does that kick in, all right?
Deep thoughts, Brett?
I unfortunately have not been up to date on this local law. I intended to speak with Kathy about it today, but our schedules.
Does, do you guys, does Nelson Pope Jorgez make a recommendation in this at the end, maybe would they lay it out for us?
Yeah, is there any way you can do that, and then circulate, I mean, can we do something by email prior to the meeting, if we wanted to present some sort of board position? Committee position?
You have to do it, you know, make that determination at a meeting.
Oh, okay.
So that one.
I mean Kathy's, yeah, I mean, it's in the memo, but I, you know, her recommendation is that it's consistent. So just see if that hasn't been said yet.
So the question would be, do we want to add or make any specific recommendations?
Which you certainly have the right to do.
Well, you know, I think Mary Ann feels very strongly about this, and I would like her to be able to offer her opinion, she could do that next, at the next trustee meeting in the, in the public comments.
When is she back?
Well, that's a good question, I don't know if she's back by then.
Is, is the definition of clearing been changed in, in, in?
The definitions of clearing and re-vedge have been edited for clarity, so.
That was John Trucker's big concern.
What, so how?
Clearing is any activity that changes or removes established vegetation in its natural state within a vacant lot or previously undeveloped area of a lot, including trees and understory. The removal and or maintenance of dangerous dead wood and non-native invasive species shall not qualify as clearing.
This means you can't clear cut the lot.
Well, no, I think there are, there's a table of offsets, I think here, and it's a lot, here it is. Up to 10,000 feet, maximum lot clearing is 100%. 10,000 to 15,000 square feet is 75, 15 to 20 is 65, and then to 60. So it's slightly different than, I think North Haven has 85%, where we have 100%.
But again, that would be outside of a wetlands area.
Yeah, I had 11,000 square foot lot, and we basically clear cut it, and I'll tell you something. We didn't get any variances, and we couldn't have built the house if we had.
Yeah.
I mean, we left three trees, we couldn't put our septic system in, we didn't put a swimming pool in. So I think in the small, small lots, like 11,000, they're, they're saying you have 100% clearance, the larger lots have more wiggle room.
Well, can I see the definitions there, do you have those?
Yeah, here, this, right here.
Just don't see what we can do tonight.
No, I don't like to rush these things.
Do.
When was the local law amended? You know? It refers to amendments, obviously.
Three, three nine, three nine twenty-one.
That was one of those amendments.
Well, it just says land clearing regulations added three nine twenty-one.
I'm just trying to determine when the 30 days.
Thirty days what?
We have, we have 30 days to make a recommendation, so, I mean, if it was amended yesterday.
Oh, you mean, oh, I'm sorry, I, I was referring to when the last amendment to the law was, that, not the amendment, not, not the amendment to propose. Well, that was a question I had, was, was, do we, do we have 30 days from the most recent version?
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's a new version, so, I mean, it could be substantially different, I don't know what.
Well, it says, a public hearing, and this was held March 14th, I don't know if this is what you're looking for, and then it says, based on the, on the outcome, changes made on April 11th.
Okay, so 30 days from April 11th.
It's May 11th, essentially.
Well, it might be May 9th, but.
Yeah, well, it's 30, it's a 30, oh.
I mean, I, I, my recollection is that the village board has in the past made changes and voted on a law without having a sort of new public hearing on the changes.
It can only do that if the changes are not substantial.
Well, they may say that they're not substantial, but I mean, I'm just saying it has, it has, it, it, it has happened.
Well, it can happen, absolutely, but if, if the changes are substantial, then the public right has a right to be.
So is it general sense, we would make, we would, we're looking to make like a more stringent recommendations or less, I mean, are we?
Oh, I think the issue is making it more stringent, and like I said, I don't see if there's any penalty in, in this, I haven't read through it, but I know North Haven did 90 days, and I think across the board, we need to put some tooth to our, well, issues, but.
What you could do, because I don't think there's any question about the coastal consistency, that's not what I'm hearing. It's, there may be other substantive changes to the law you want to make, so, I mean, what you this may be the, because there may not be consensus on those changes anyway. You could do a, you do a motion accepting the coastal consistency, and then, you know, go next Tuesday on anything.
That's a good idea. Does everybody agree with that, clear on that? Okay, do I hear a motion?
So you have that, you have the coastal consistency.
Right, yeah, so we need a motion to accept it.
So do I hear a motion to accept the coastal consistency, is there a date on that?
I'll make a motion.
Probably today.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved, so we have accepted that, and I, I think that Fred's point is well taken, that we can show up next Tuesday.
And talk about other.
The nuances, yeah. Caliper. Yeah.
And let me ask you, when we go before these meetings, though, if we go before the trustees, do we speak as an individual?
I think unless you take in a formal position, you should be speaking as individuals.
Yeah.
Then not.
If you happen to agree with each other, that's great.
Yeah.
But it's not the.
And you can't sit, you're not allowed to sit next to somebody who's on the Harvard Committee. You introduce yourself as a member of the Harvard Committee, but you're not speaking as a member of the Harvard Committee.
I always prefer not to even say.
Okay, so I think we have brought this to a logical conclusion.
I often say, a motion to adjourn is always in order.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Great, would you like to second?
I cannot do that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it has happened, it's 7:46. 6:46, sorry.
I didn't want to lose another hour of my life.
Yeah, boy, oh, boy.